Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Aaron Gaitrell has been an employee of Burke County since January 16, 2019, one of your full-time home confinement officers. Aaron is a major in the Army Reserves, and I've asked him to come in today and just talk to the council briefly. Aaron, if you can stand up and come up.
Good morning. I just want to briefly just say, as you all know, the Home Confinement Department has become a well-oiled machine. Steel Vachelio is back there also. He's the supervisor of the Home Confinement Department. Aaron Gaitrell started with us as a home confinement officer in January of 2018. Prior to him coming here, Aaron served for ten years after-duty military and is now in the reserves. And he's performing his duties outside of here. Most people, when they pass him, they salute him. He's a major, which is quite an accomplishment. But he has a certificate that he'd like to share with you all.
So often, as a military member, we get thanked for our service. And Tim, and as the council, you guys have been tremendous in your support and all my members in the military. So last year around this time, I was, we were asked if anybody wanted to nominate their employers and thank them for their support. And I thought of you guys definitely had the first thought on the line. So I wrote an essay, and you guys were nominated. And so I'm going to present you with a certificate for your thanks and appreciation from the Army National Guard and Reserve.
And it says, "Employer's Support of the Guard and Reserve Presents This Above and Beyond Award to the Burke County Council, presented on behalf of the men and women of the National Guard and Reserve Forces, the outstanding service and continuous support to the national defense." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. It's a wonderful work. I don't know if you know it or not, but I was in church, which a little bit I do, and one day I was at church, and a lady came up to me, and she says, "A family member of hers has tried to get clean for years." And this was back around Christmas time, so, and it was a success story because of what had been done down in the Day Report Center and Home Confinement, and expressed how nice it was for them to be able to keep this job and try to get clean and to save the money. So thank you each and every one of y'all that put your heart and soul in that.
And I want to say the same thing. You know, you guys, you guys, we, we up here, we just created a vision. You guys are the ones that do the work. You guys are the ones that are keeping the families together, keeping people in their jobs, saving the county tax money. I mean, you guys are doing a tremendous service to this community with what you're doing every day. And, and I can tell you, I so much personally appreciate what you guys do every day.
And I appreciate those words. I don't want to forget to mention, Steel Vachelio back there has quite the resume. He was even the chief of police for a period of time down in Louisiana. He and his wife moved up here a couple of years ago. I don't even remember why now. But he makes the Home Confinement Program operating. He's done a tremendous job, and I'm very grateful for his, his work.
We are too. But I'm going to, you want to, let's take a photo, take a break and take a photo real quick. We were just talking up there, Mr. Davis, that before Phil Martin passed away, you know, he mentioned about the old photos of the buildings that were being constructed and stuff that's outside in the corridor. And he told me, one, probably a month before he passed away, he said, Doug, he said, you know, the photos that's been in this building for many, many years about buildings isn't what makes the county what it is, it's people, he said. And he said, "I'd like to see people on those walls a little bit more than I do the buildings." So maybe we can try to do a little bit of that here and there. So, all right, more so people that have made the county what it is today, and not so much public, that's not the public officials, it's, it's, they come and go, but it's the people that give back to the community.
Well, they certainly, you all certainly help.
We do, but we're very modest people, and, and we're not the, you know, we, we do help reverend, but we don't ask to be recognized. So that's a good thing about this council. All right. Any other items from the public? We need a motion to approve the agenda.
As am I.
Sorry. Second. Got to be fast, Jim. Got to be fast. All right. Got a motion, we got a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, I see you coming up.
Yes, sir. I have one internal, if you're ready for internal budget.
I will. I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I will take your internal budget revision.
I have one internal budget revision for, for the council's, please.
Yeah, dude.
One internal budget revision for the council's consideration. The request comes from the honorable Larry Hess, your assessor, Department 406 Assessor General Fund. Mr. Hess is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 568, which is the Assessor of Other Contributions, by $4,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $6,500, with nothing spent to date. An increase actually create line 226, insurance and bonds by $4,000 for the payment of unemployment benefits due to an invoice that we just received last week.
All right. Any questions on internal budget revision? If not, moving on to change of status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for the following individual: Jason E. Miller, as a deputy with annual salary of $39,500, effective August 17, 2020; Matthew Clark, as a deputy with the annual salary of $39,500, effective October 13, 2020; new hire recommendation received by Gary Wine, IT Director for Deanna Plowch, as an IT Coordinator with an annual salary of $32,475, effective August 3, 2020; new hire recommendation received from the honorable John Small, Jr., County Clerk for Penny Van Meter, as a deputy clerk with an annual salary of $28,779, effective August 3, 2020; change in status received from Mary, from Mary Cackley, Director of 911 for Bethany Momet, Momet. She is going from part-time to full-time telecommunicator with her salary increased from $18.60 per hour to $40,989 annually, effective August 1, 2020; letter resignation received from Central Dispatch for Jennifer McLeod and Amanda Garland, effective July 22, 2020; letter of retirement received from Voters Registration for Donnie Plotner, effective July 31, 2020; letter of resignation received from the Voters Registration from, for Denise McCain, effective July 31, 2020; letter of retirement received from the Voters Registration for Tammy Devlin, effective July 30, 2020. Any questions or changes on the change of status? We have minutes in our read-ahead. Any corrections on those? If not, I'd like to pull those minutes and have a vote on those for, because Council Person Whitaker was not here.
The first time we've accepted July 16, kind of 20 minutes over previous times.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
One extension for your absence.
August is upon us, so next Thursday, we'll be here in the chamber. And boards and commissions, let's see, we are, have, anybody taken on WEPM for tomorrow?
I'll do that if I want to.
All right, Miss Small, sounds like you're on it. On Monday, the, the 3rd, is 6:00 PM Planning Commission. Tuesday, the 4th, 5:00 PM Sewer District. 6:00 PM Stormwater District. Friday at 7:00 would be Councilperson Person, the 7th. At 9:00 AM, Miss Small will be on WEPM Talk Radio. All right.
Mr. President, if I may, we completed the first round of interviews for the 911 Director vacancy that we've created, and Mrs. actually, this year. We have four candidates that we'd like to bring to the board of council. We were wondering if Thursday, August 13, from the afternoon, would be approved.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Everybody, all right? Okay. All right, we have a chancel, chancel, cancel check, request from County Clerk's Finance Office. Any questions on that?
Is that check written to City of Hospital or?
No. No wonder it's canceled.
We have a letter endorsement for Baker Heights Volunteer Fire Department. It's their
I don't know if you know it or not, but I was in church, which a little bit I do. Um, and uh, one day I was at church and, and a lady came up to me and she says, "A family member of hers has tried to get clean for years." And um, um, and this was back around Christmas time. So, and it was a success story because of what being done down in the Day Report Center and Home Confinement. And expressed how nice it was for them to be able to keep his job and try to get clean as a safety guy. So thank you each and every one of y'all that put your heart and soul in that.
I, I, and I want to say the same thing. You know, you guys, you guys, we, we up here, we just created a vision. You guys are the ones that do the work. You guys are the ones that are keeping the families together, keeping people in their jobs, saving the county tax money. I mean, you guys are doing a tremendous service to this community with what you're doing every day. And, and I, I can tell you, I so much personally appreciate what you guys do every day.
And I appreciate those words. I, I don't want to forget to, to mention Steel Vigiliio back there has quite the resume. Uh, he, he was even a chief of police for a period of time down in Louisiana. He and his wife moved up here a couple of years ago. Uh, I don't even remember why now, but uh, he makes the home confinement program operating. He's done a tremendous job and I'm very grateful for his, his uh, his work.
We are too.
Yes.
I'm gonna, you wanna, let's take a photo, take a break and take a photo real quick. We were just talking up there, Mr. Davis, that uh, before uh, Phil Martin passed away. You know, he mentioned about the old photos of the buildings that were being constructed and stuff that's outside in the corridor. And he told me uh, uh, wasn't probably a month before he passed away, he said, Doug, he said, you know, uh, the photos that's been in this building for many, many years about buildings uh, isn't what makes the county what it is, is people. He said, and uh, he said, "I'd like to see people on those walls a little bit more than I do the building." So maybe we can try to do a little bit of that here and there. So, all right. More so uh, people that have made the county what it is today and not so much public. It's not the public officials, it's, it's, they come and go, but it's the people that give back to the community.
Well, they certainly, you all certainly help.
We do, but we're very modest people and, and we're not the, you know, we, we do help reverend, but we don't ask to be recognized. So, that's a good thing about this council. All right. Any other items from the public? We need a motion to approve the agenda. Gotta be fast, Jim. Gotta be fast. All right. Um, got a motion, we got a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, I see you coming up.
Yes, sir. I have one internal, be ready for internal budget.
I will. I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I will take your internal budget revision.
I have one internal budget revision for, for the council's.
Yeah, dude.
Um, one internal budget revision for the council's consideration. Request comes from the honorable Larry Hess, your assessor, Department 406 Assessor General Fund. Uh, Mr. Hess is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 568, which is the Assessor of Other Contributions, by $4,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $6,500 with nothing spent to date. An increase actually create line 226, insurance and bonds by $4,000 for the payment of unemployment benefits um, due to an invoice that we just received last week.
All right. Anybody have any questions on internal budget revision? If not, moving on to change of status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for the following individual, Jason E. Miller as a deputy with annual salary of $39,500 effective August 17th, 2020. Matthew Clark as a deputy with the annual salary of $39,500 effective October 13th, 2020. New hire recommendation received by Gary Wine, IT Director for Deanna uh, Couch as an IT Coordinator with an annual salary of $32,475 effective August 3rd, 2020. New hire recommendation received from the honorable John Small Jr., County Clerk for Penny Van Meter as a deputy clerk with an annual salary of $28,779 effective August 3rd, 2020. Change in status received from Mary, from Mary Cackley, Director of 911 for Bethany Mummert, Mummert. Uh, for, she is going from part-time to full-time telecommunicator with a salary increase from $18.60 per hour to $40,989 annually effective August 1st, 2020. Letter of resignation received from Central Dispatch for Jennifer McLeod and Amanda Garland effective July 22nd, 2020. Letter of retirement received from Voters Registration for Donnie Plotner effective July 31st, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the Voters Registration from, for Denise McCain effective July 31st, 2020. Letter of retirement received from the Voters Registration for Tammy Devlin effective July 30th, 2020. Any questions or changes on the change of status? We have minutes um, in our read ahead. Uh, any corrections on those? If not, I'd like to pull those minutes and have a vote on those for, because Councilperson Whitaker was not here. Have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
One extension for good absence.
August is upon us, so next Thursday we'll be here in the chamber. And boards and commissions. Let's see, we are, have uh, anybody taken on WEPM for tomorrow?
I'll do that if I want to.
All right, Ms. Moss, sounds like you're on it. On Monday, the, the 3rd, um, is 6:00 PM Planning Commission. Tuesday, the 4th, 5:00 PM Sura District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District. Friday at 7:00, um, would be Councilperson, Person, the 7th. At 9:00 AM, Ms. Moss will be on WEPM Talk Radio. All right.
Mr. President, if I may, we completed the first round of interviews for um, the 911 Director. Agency that we've created and Mrs. actually, this year. Um, we have four candidates that we'd like to bring to the board of council. We were wondering if Thursday, August 13th afternoon would be approved.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Everybody, all right. Okay. All right, we have a chancel, chancel, cancel check, uh, request from County Clerk's Finance Office. Any questions on that?
Is that check written to City of Hospital or?
No wonder it's canceled.
We have a letter endorsement for Baker Heights Volunteer Fire Department. It's their annual fundraiser. I think this is the fourth year for that. Uh, anybody have any issues on that? Um, and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning, sir. Looks like you're a little busy today.
Got a lot of work on it.
Well, this is two weeks, actually. I didn't have any. We had a couple last week, so we didn't get them ready. Too busy filming together, as I said. That's a total of two weeks here, but I do have, I do have quite a few. The first ones I have, um, they're listed as taxpayer errors. And uh, there are most of them are, they either did mark out the vehicles or um, they reported, they've been marking out those type of regions. I have a total of uh, seven on, I think, or six, six of them. And they add up to $3,426.77. That, if you have a question where you're thinking about that, Craig, kitchen, kitchen needs?
Uh, it's a big one.
Uh, it's a big one, but what happened is he had a motorhome and he had, he's been paying tax on it, had a tag on it, but he went and left for like a week or two vacation. While he was gone, he traded it for another, a new one. So. So he actually gets credit for the old one, but being built for the new one by accident, or not? Well, what happened is he didn't own the old one on July 1st. Goodness, I see that. You know, they sold it, traded it again. So when he came back, he had the new one, they owned it on July 1st, but he didn't report it until after July 1st. In other words, put the new tag on it, that's true, but he owned it. So um, and he reported on his, when he returned, but he said, you know, "I didn't own it on July 1st, I wasn't here." He did own it. I mean, it's no difference, it's no difference if you owned it, he was on vacation with it, he was just out of town with it, but still had it. But he did report it and, but we had to put it along as a taxpayer error. I don't know if you have a question on that or not.
So you say he owned it. Did he have the title transferred into his name? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So he did?
Oh, he bought it, yeah.
Oh, I understand. I mean, I can go buy one today and that doesn't mean the title gets transferred today.
Well, yeah, it may not have transferred that certain day, but actually he owned it on the day he traded his old media, which was before July 1st. He was just out of town, that's, that's all, you know. But, I guess he did on a paperwork. Transactions were made before July 1st.
Does that actually classify him owning it more with, if the title's not transferred into his name?
If he paid for it, oh, yeah. And then, you know, they say, you know.
Yeah, he owned it when he split from the trade.
So did, did he pay tax on that also?
No, the old one, no, we took the old one off.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because he didn't own it in July 1st, we had to remove that, so.
So you're just adding this?
Yeah.
This is the new?
This is the new. Yeah. Sure. All right, entertain a motion on the uh, six personal tax exemptions due to taxpayer error.
President, I'm going to accept the six exemptions due to taxpayer error for personal property.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, you have 10 personal tax exemptions due to officer? Yes, I do. Yeah, personal property, uh, there's 10 of them there for the reasons that's listed there. First of them, you know, it's created the bill for long years and different reasons, but the total, if you add them up, the total goes to, well, 10,31122. Entertain a motion on 10 personal tax exemptions due to officer?
So move.
Second, motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Looks like you have 16 real estate tax exemptions due to officer, and I think that's the homestead? Yeah, most of them are homesteads. I don't know, we, we have a bunch of them this year for some reason. We went through the whole file last year and sent out a lot of letters to people that were disability and different things. But for some reason, so, a lot of these didn't get back over, so we've had several. Now, we have to go through and transfer, check in these, make sure we're getting, getting these uh, straightened out. And we don't have these errors like that, but uh, but the most of them are for homesteads. Okay. All right. Eight thousand 956 dollars and 27 cents? Yes. All right. Entertained a motion on 16 real estate tax exemptions due to officer?
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And you have one apportionment of assessment for taxes uh, for divorce? Yeah, I do. Uh, for David and Cassie, Sid, they, one of them split the bills up because of the divorce, they had four vehicles. Total assessed value of $31,995. We split the bill up for them, we got three vehicles, assessed value is $29,130. And she got one at $2,865 of assessed value, so. We have approval on that. Need a motion on the one apportionment of assessment of property?
Second.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you. I do have one last thing. It's an application for deconsolidation. We had two lots consolidated together for, well, three lots actually for this uh, problem, Lyndon. And she wanted to split them back out, so I guess she's going to sell them and do something with it. So we had to deconsolidate that one, split it back out. All right, entertain a motion for the one, application for deconsolidation of the property. Motion been made?
Second.
Second. Um, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnard.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I had a, uh, board meeting Monday. They uh, agreed to pay application number one to HRI for $36,000 for the Grapevine Transmission Name, which is a $3.5 million project. This is just the first pay application. And then they had the last pay application for the DNM Contracting with Blairton Road Distribution System, parallels to effect three, down at Blairton 2 Grapevine Road. And that was $20,000 out of a $2 million project. And uh, they uh, Procter and Gamble has quickly ramped up water consumption and is now exceeding 1.1 million gallons a day. And they're getting a half a million gallons a day from the city of Martinsburg to uh, address that increased demand. And uh, and they just uh, discussed a lot of issues, the conversion of that and the rebuilding software, et cetera, et cetera. And that was my meeting. Et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you for your
Et cetera.
Expression of words there, Mr. Barnard.
He's now short of words, et cetera.
Ms. Moss?
This week I haven't had regular meetings per se, but a lot of things have been happening. It's a lot of paper shuffle. Uh, under landmarks, we finally got the deed from North Carolina to move forward the pedigree monument with the insurance company. Uh, get that straightened out. Um, the Roundhouse, um, calling and raising the cane on Thursday, last Thursday. The checks supposedly went out on Friday. I've been at the mailbox every morning and it hasn't come yet. So uh, I don't know if they said they bailed on Friday to appease us, but that's what we've got. In fact, this guy from the state called yesterday. "What do you mean you don't have the checks yet?" "Well, I can't vent them. I'm at the post office in the morning picking them. It's not there." So it's mostly a paper chase this week. It hasn't been much. However, I was very deeply honored uh, to be at the Mountaineer Drug Recovery. We did the groundbreaking for the women and children. And uh, it was a nice, small, uh, meeting. And uh, and I think it's going to be, just like with Tim and the Day Report Center and other things that have been going on with the drug rehab, again, keeping families together.
Yeah, that's very important for.
So that was our meeting this week.
Do you know how many square feet the, the should be?
No, they didn't, they didn't discuss. They talked about the programs they had, wanted to put in and the people that were involved, so.
Mr. Delia?
That, that, you know, I, I don't have anything to report, but it is, it is uh, um, it is good to hear that it continues to program, continues to grow, and the thought process of giving a hand up instead of a handout continues to, uh, continues to work in the community and help, uh, help keep families together.
Yeah. Mr. Whitaker?
No meetings to report. After a brief, the handup, it's always better than a handout.
Yeah, and I heard some good comment coming from someone that's had some addiction in his family and he said, um, just hearing a lot of good things back from Jefferson County on, he wrote for, uh, the Mountaineer Recovery on, on the success stories coming out of there. And I know the whole organization, his heart is in it. They're very passionate about it, they did it. So, any uh, reappointment uh, letters? Uh, we, we have some people that we want to reappoint anybody, I should say. All right. Uh, Mr. Davis, you want to pick up on some things on your end? We have, uh, let's go ahead and do state, um, let's do the chain link fence recommendations. Don't let me forget, I need to get out there today and look and make sure we're not creating any, um, any issues out there, out back. Sometime we'll walk out back today, sir.
Exactly. Will you do that? He's all day.
Okay.
Um, as the council is aware, uh, last Thursday, July 23rd, we opened bids for the chain link fencing gates needed for the Church Street parking lot, which is located in the rear of the Dunn Building. Um, the bids were due no later than Wednesday, July 22nd. We only received one bid prior to the closing date and time. Um, that particular contract is, as well as one other fencing contract, we're heading up with Mr. Lang uh, to inspect and measure the area. Uh, the only bid received was from Long Fencing, uh, which is located in Iamsville, Maryland. We suspended a lump sum bid of $36,965. Uh, if you'll recall, Long Fencing did the fence, uh, the perimeter fencing and the gates at 802 in the Roush Drive. So we're very, very familiar with the quality of work that they do. Uh, Mr. Lang and I reviewed the bid. Uh, we agreed that it contains the required information and needs the minimum qualification that's, that was outlined in the request for proposal. Um, we did reach out to Long Fencing. Um, they have indicated that, uh, if awarded today, they could be on site in mid-August, uh, 2020 to begin, um, installing what they need to install. Um, of course, they might have to get the paving done. Um, the back parking lot has been marked. Uh, they actually provided the diagram of where they needed the electric, electrical and data cabling run. Um, we will be cutting, I shouldn't say we, it started to sound like Councilperson, uh, so. Um, facilities department will eat, uh, will begin cutting asphalt uh, tomorrow. Uh, and we'll be in there on Monday with, um, like a little mini backhoe removing and trenching out. So, um, we are recommending to the council that we award the bid for the chain link fence and um, the two gates with openers to Long Fencing in the amount of $36,965.
All right, uh, entertain a motion on the bid recommendation.
So move.
Second. Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, sir. Uh, next, I'm gonna move on to Brian Ross, Director of Engineering Department, Adoption of Building Code and revisions. With revisions, I should say. You ready for that?
Yes, sir.
All right, tell us a little bit about what you're wanting to do here and the, I want to, uh, want you to express the revisions that we're talking about, okay?
Okay. Well, as we all know, we're basically governed by the state fire marshal. And uh, I had this as part of the read ahead, evidently didn't get attached, I could hand out.
Sure.
The letter from the state fire marshal.
Thank you. It's basically a very simple re-adoption. Um, the only change that is made in this is basically the electrical code changed from the 2014 to the 2017 edition. As you will see there, referenced in the state fire marshal letter. All existing codes prior are, need to be re-adopted because everything will be null and void if we do not. So we still, from the residential perspective and commercial, we're still on the 2015 with the 2009 energy codes. Um, basically it's, everything's staying consistent on that end.
All right, you want to express these changes a little bit?
Excuse me?
These are the changes that we're talking about?
The, the changes, um, from the code adoption, um, from the 2014 to 2017 are basically for AFCI, which is basically park fault, um, which is basically on the electrical end at, to let the county know. Um, that is all done through third party, of our third party electrical inspectors. It doesn't technically affect us from the building inspections and permit end. Um, I've reached out to Dave Hartley, um, when this came across and got in touch with Wes Clark. And just so the county knows, Wes Clark is putting on a training seminar on August 10th at Airborne Church for anyone who wants to come and see the updates in the electrical code.
That's August 10th?
Yes. Should be at 5:00 PM at Airborne Church off of Rock Cliff Drive.
All right.
Monday, Monday. Change to the 2017 edition is bound to, or to 11. No changes in the, in the code, if, if looking at, or just administrative changes. Third, where, things.
Okay. Anybody, um, have any questions for Brian? If not, entertain a motion.
So, so when are, so when are we going to, um, when are we going to make this effective?
It's fact about this first.
Huh?
That it would be effective tomorrow.
So, does that, does that pose a problem when they're not even going to do training and, for two more weeks?
I don't think so, really. I mean, they change the state code all the time.
Yeah, and all the, all the electrical inspectors do have this notification already. And I know Wes and, um, the other electrical inspectors have been discussing. Basically, from a residential perspective, I think one of the new requirements is going to be, um, smoke detectors inside grides now, from a residential.
I hope it's not smoke, it should be.
Well, CO, yeah, I'm sorry. CO2.
CO2 or heat, or you can do heat, but you can't do smoke.
So it'd be inside the garage and inside the fire rated door.
All right. Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion.
So you want to move to amend, to amend this re-adoption?
Well, I'd like to make that motion to. readopt an amendment, uh, going from a two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen, uh.
Some move.
Motion been made. Do I have a second?
Same.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, sir. Let's see. All right, Mr. D. All right, Mr. Davis, you have, uh, State Budget Revision Number Two, Fund Zero Zero One.
Yes, sir. Um, I have, uh, you have in your packet, uh, recommendation for State Budget Revision Number Two to the General Fund. Um, last year, or last week, we did State Budget Revision Number One, we did, for all intents and purposes, recognize the additional unencumbered fund balance, so this is the normal end of the month, um, uh, State Budget Revision for the month of July. Uh, during the month of July, we did receive eighteen checks and ACHs totaling, uh, one million fifty-five thousand fifty-eight dollars. Uh, of note, uh, we received, um, the coronavirus relief fund reimbursements, um, for, for the entire month of July, and we have not received, uh, all the disbursements yet. But for the entire month of July, or during the, the month of July, we received, uh, coronavirus relief fund, uh, grant approvals, uh, totaling two million one hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Um, that we submitted, and that's what's been approved so far. Of that total amount in this current State Budget Revision is nine, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and six dollars, which is the, uh, the reimbursements that have been awarded that, that we actually received, uh, to date. Uh, in addition, we did receive, uh, reimbursement from Baker Heights for the Safer Grant, uh, firefighters. So, I'm recommending of the one million fifty-five thousand fifty-eight dollars at one million twelve thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars be placed in your contingency account, um, for a discussion that we will have later this morning. Uh, also, uh, the reimbursement from, um, Baker Heights for the firefighters would be placed in Account Seven-Eleven. I dispersed them on salaries employer at ICA. Uh, we've also received some reimbursements, uh, in some of the emergency, uh, supplies that we've received. Um, supplies and equipment that we've received, uh, for seven-eleven. So that the total amount that I'm recommending that we put in emergency services is forty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, and the reimbursement from, you mean from, uh, Baker Heights Volunteer Fire Department is the reimbursement from the Safer Grant.
It's all Safer Grant, which is through the E.P. agreement.
Right. Entertaining motion on the, uh, State Budget Revision Number Two, Fund Zero Zero One.
Some move.
Same.
No motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we're gonna recognize our, uh, good friend, Mr. Bentley, for his retirement. Um, so, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Bentley has done a wonderful job all over the years that he's been here is keeping, uh, keeping us out of trouble. And, uh, I don't recall any tax cases that you ever lost. Nothing since I've been here. It felt like it didn't bother me. Um, but you've also, uh, one of my first conversations was with Mr. Bentley was, uh, uh, being pretty nervous. Uh, and, and, uh, yeah, and I say to them, is, if your value keeps us out of trouble, if you do that, we're gonna get along great, and, and you have to feel that, uh, committed to Mr. Bentley. And very professional. Very, very professionally, that's all, so. And I'm gonna open up the floor once I get done, because I know there's many of y'all wanna speak, the full week, Department Head, or anybody that wants to speak out, kind of, kind of, of things, anybody from the public, but please feel free to use a. Mr. President Bentley, if you would, through the honors. You have something to say, you know, a lot, you couldn't sell a painting yourself.
I didn't write it.
I have proclamation, uh, for Norwood Danny the Third. Whereas Norwood Danny attended public schools in Blue County, uh, West Virginia, the youth, and graduated from Scott High School in Madison. Graduating Class of Three.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-one.
Madison, West Virginia, and from there attended Marshall University to earn his bachelor's degree in political science and English. Thank you for that English, thank you. The Defense Language Institute to earn his graduate degree, Marshall University, for his master's degree, and his Juris Doctor, uh, from West Virginia University. And whereas Norwood partnered with a local law firm in Burkey County, thus began providing representation for the county in nineteen ninety-two. And collectively, Norwood has been supporting the county for almost three decades. Whilst, in two thousand and seven, Norwood accepted a core role directing for then, Burkey County Government. And whereas, after practicing law for more than thirty-four years, Norwood has determined that upon a time of even light to travel or for the buyer service to. But that he will also continue to maintain his law license, and may offer his services either volunteered to government or charity during this time. Sometimes you do need to, to. Has also expressed an interest in documenting his family history and putting to written work meant to build and enhance government efforts and efficiencies. And whereas, we will miss Norwood, Norwood's stories of his mama and dad. Now, I didn't get it, can you tell? Like, can you do that expression for Norwood?
Alwood.
Alwood?
Alwood. I'm here, Alwood. You're in. Lane, Alwood.
You're in trouble again.
You're in trouble.
As he, as he refers to that, so following in, in stories of his two sons, Samuel and Burkey, as he grew up. Especially Samuel, running through Martin's grocery store, touching all the donors. And how he still refers to his wife, oh, yeah, for many years, as his bride. And, uh, this place, from wedding photo, proudly on his desk. Now, Norwood goes his time over his shoulder, so it's not a skillful going in. But we all have lunch together. Uh, and we thank you for leading us with these warm and funny memories. Whereas, we wish the very best on your much-deserved and welcome, we can, Norwood. And while your position will be filled, no one will take your place in the hearts of you. Now therefore be resolved, that Burkey County Council will make Norwood Bentley for all the valuable counsel that he has provided, and for all his continued efforts in public service in which he's in. All the best on his behalf, adopt this day, of this thirtieth day of the last one in the month.
Thank you, Eric. Speak. Well, thanks, um. The thing I'm most proud of, I think, is that I thank so many good friends. I'm looking forward to to not coming to work. I am looking forward to traveling some, some virus areas. Let's send Canada right now to the.
They'll let you in Mexico.
Yeah, I am studying Spanish, so.
See.
It's been a real honor to have served with all of you. I, uh, just noticed I started in nineteen ninety-two, and I'm still hard to write. I guess, and have missed a lot of time. And I've worked for, uh, a lot of very good people. People. They, they were each stand out to me. By birth. Seventeen. I worked for some really good folks. But I gotta say, and I say this in all. The current County Council is the best-informed, most engaged group that I've lived, that I've worked for. They, not a person on this council doesn't know, but hasn't looked at every line item. He doesn't know how it works. That's not always the. I remember the days that didn't, when, and the commissioners didn't know anything. Except that they needed the science and inventory handed, but you put they didn't know how it worked. They opted. I'm very proud, I gotta say, to watch every day. So, it's been a pleasure to work with, with all those folks. It's also been a pleasure to work with all of you and those who aren't here. The Constitutional Officers, the other officers, Virginia, I've known for several, maybe years. And, uh, Decapulate Strength. John Small. Has been there longer than I'll put us. He's entering his sixty-third year of service. And many other sheriffs over the years. I have appreciated that, and I appreciate many current friends here. Gary and Alan have become great friends. And they're pretty good too. So, it's been really good. It is those friendships and the opportunity for me to provide public service. I've always enjoyed public service. In the government office for a long time. I've lived, this is a number of years. I believe in public service. And you should be proud of the service that you're offered by the County of the State. And you should be proud of the opportunity that you have, I love you, offering, to serve the people. So, it's a a really fulfilling thing. Here comes Mary, she's always late. But she's always welcome. And, uh, I love her very much. I've had a lot of support. I'll tell you what. The strides that we have made as a team. The things that we've done, the improvements we've made. Just in the transparency of what we've done, how many, and those big stuff. We're a big county. And what we do is so meaningful. All of it says that we're just a county. So, I just wanted to see the load on one of them. And it's, uh, it's been fun. It's been fulfilling to me. Made a lot of friends. Consider all of them. And I, I can tell you what. It's not just the department heads. It's not just the members of the council. This team is a pretty big team. It's those people who work hard every day, all through the hard work. It's the people that keep our offices clean. It's, you know, great marshals, captains. This is a, a really great order of the base. Proud to a better part. Thank you very much.
Um, at this time, the County Council, can you make any comments and things to Mr. Bentley?
I, I, I would like to, I would like to say, you know, when, um, this, this serving as the, as a county councilman is, is definitely going to be one of the highlights of my life. Um, and one of those, one of those pleasures is definitely, um, getting to know you, Mr. Bentley, and, and, uh, being able to call you a friend. You, uh, you, you've served your community well, and, uh, and you're a good friend. So, thank, thank you.
I'd like to, I'm gonna make that up, so, thank you.
And, you know, you've been practicing all forty years, I think you're finally getting it right. Just in time to retire. But I've enjoyed the conversation with you, sitting down, talking about places to eat, the good food you, you've had, uh, in our lives. And I hope you, uh, continue that endeavor in your time. Enjoy it, it's great fun. I enjoy it.
We'll still meet here on every Thursday for a while, so, you want to come on back here. We'll always have you.
Thanks, everybody.
I had the pleasure, uh, one of my first meetings, uh, opportunities with, uh, Norwood I'd known for a long time. I went to a state meeting with him and Mr. Stubblefield in the car. And when, when, when we got back, Mr. Stubblefield was telling somebody, there isn't a place in West Virginia between Norwood and Elaine that don't know where the best place to eat at, at all these other stops.
That's for sure.
That was, that was a lot of fun, because at the time, when I first got into office, I had been on the, with state affairs, and so I had a lot of travel time. So, that was a really, uh, opportunity to spend a couple, like ten hours, because it's like five hours each way, uh, on, in the car, and, uh, reminiscing about good eateries. Unfortunately, most of them are gone now, aren't they, Norwood? A lot of the small places. And, uh, the big thing I enjoyed with Norwood is the discussion of ancestry and history and all of this, other than the legal aspects, and, uh, that's been a lot of fun. Thanks.
And, uh, one of the things, uh, there's several of us meet, um, in the mornings on Thursday morning, it's very productive, Mr. Davis' office, and it's usually Dan, and so Norwood, uh, Alan, Gary. We talk about, you know, what's on the horizon, what, what do we need to look at, what do we need to be prepared for, and how can we actually find a solution to, to, to come to situations? But, uh, I think Alan, and a lot of us can attest that the one, one of our memories that will inevitably is, anytime we're doing a truck, if Norwood, we allow him to drive. Um, and, uh, so I had to stand up to do this one, I can't talk about this, but you, so you're going down there, taking all of a sudden, you know, going sixty-five mile an hour, and you go all of a sudden, speed up to eighty mile. And it's great, what they do to windshield. And, uh, this is on the whole trip, and, uh, and this is going on. I asked him one day, I said, Norwood, what happened? Did the block of wood fall off your panel down there, or what? And, uh, and, uh, the other thing, Mr. Bentley, um, as you know, um, this is a, uh, all flowers are Republican, of course, but we like to think that we're, we walk the centerline. You, you look, look side of the fence, and bring it very seldom, can you get that done each day? Because I firmly believe from the political side of the party, right, won't be anything. Because I firmly believe from the political side of the far right, won't get anything out of the far left. I'll never get anything out of the too far out. But it's the ones down the middle that are very successful in the very political arena. So with that said, knowing that Norwood was only a Democrat, representing a full Republican council, we always were making one third of the ones. And you know that you get trained when a speech is started, you're just like this, and they're not touching the floor. Norwood, there's a fond memory that I'll never forget, but believe me, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Many, many more.
Open it up to any employees. Mr. Davis?
I've had the great, very great pleasure of working with Norwood for fifteen years.
You come up to the podium, just turn, go ahead and turn it to the side and put it over on the side.
Had the great, very great pleasure of working with Norwood for the past fifteen years. He's become a good, trusted friend. I've always known that Norwood had our back and always had my back, and always had the best interest of the county in mind. Knowing that he is retiring, or we've had the opportunity, or as much, I reminisce about some of the things that we've been through and some of the things that we've done, some of which we all invented publicly. But we've been through some times, and it's been, it's been great fun. One of my fond memories is going to Charles, Norwood, surviving the dry lunging back. But walking through the Capitol and the State House, it was always like one Charles, like a rock star. He couldn't do it now in the age of social distancing, because every female that he passed wanted to hug him. And we always, we always knew the best restaurants to eat at. And I will miss our dinners at Coggy Rose, because they were special. So I've told him privately and openly publicly how much I miss him.
Brian?
One thing I'd like to mention about Mr. Bentley is he always had an open door. I've been with the county here now for five years, and any time I needed something to talk to Mr. Bentley, whether it was from a legal perspective, or to get his opinion on something, this man would drop what he was doing. Come on in, Ryan. Come on in, Ryan. I got time for you. Come on in. I was never rejected by this man pertaining to any issue that I had as a director for this town. And that is a compliment to him. Now granted, most of our conversations ended with, well, I could get a piece of cheesecake right now. But his door was always open. And he was a great man to sit and talk to, and there's a lot, there's a lot of intelligence and wisdom in there. And to that, I thank you, Mr. Bentley.
I've not had the pleasure of knowing Norwood merely as long as many of you have. But in the few years I've known him, this is what I'm going to remember. The first department head staff meeting I participated in. I had only been in this role for a couple of months. And the department heads are going around giving their, their updates. And there's a lot of important people here, a lot of important work happening. And I'm feeling all insecure because I'm brand new. I've got two people down here who just gave reports, and I don't know what to expect. And when it was my turn to give a report, I said something minimizing my role. And you responded, I don't even remember exactly what you said, but you responded with your, your first of many compliments. And you encouraged me. And regularly throughout the time that I've known you, you've gone out of your way to stop me and look me in the eye, and you can see each other here and there, offering me encouragement. And I think it was Mark Clean that said I can look for two months on a good compliment. Well, that's what you've done really, and I'm grateful for it. Thank you, Norwood. Think we ought to turn this into a roast.
I was thinking the best I would start with, why, why he moved to do.
Wait until Mary gets on.
Yeah. What you get for being late?
No, I mean, wait until you get, what, no, wait until you get your chance at the podium to talk about, is what I meant.
See, I have friends that are the ones that roast.
Yeah, I want to echo what Brian said about Paul Pador. Sure, probably many times in the last three and a half years, I must have heard my name, a fronty one shut the door. And I learned a lot about the county hallways, especially the council office. I didn't know which way he was going to try to escape when he knew I was there. In the last three and a half years, Mr. Davis, oftentimes he would put a desk in his office there. Because I spent the last time in there, he felt like I needed to move right in there and stay there. But he's always been there to help me, and it's always been Mr. Bentley. It's Norwood. Excuse me, Norwood. You've been a good friend to me, you've helped me, you've given me advice, which you've always left every time I've been with you by saying something positive to me, keep me up for one, and keep me built up, and help me get through frustration. So for the last three and a half years, I've spent a lot of time with you discussing issues, going over things, and you've always been there and given me good advice. And I thank you for the professional side, but I thank you even more for the friendship of yours. And I wish you the very best of luck, and I hope you can carry it's long, healthy path. Thank you, sir.
I'll just leave that behind.
Coffee to the chair, Sheriff.
Now, Norwood, like Scott said, for three and a half years, you've been there for us. I know we've had some heated conversations with that three and a half years, but I always respected what you advised us to do. Did a good job, did a good job for the county that you're really going to be missing here. Because I don't know, it takes a while to replace somebody that's got the experience that you had. I appreciate everything you've done for me and your charity. Thank you.
Anyone else? I knew you, I was waiting. Watch out, Norwood, you got it coming now.
Norwood and I have worked together for most of my forty years plus with the county. We really got close during address conversion. On top of that, the number one D and funding mechanism has changed a great deal over the years. So it's really become sometimes confusing and confusitive. But I can always rely on Norwood to give me the best advice and guide me. He started out with me being, or with us being the department head needing legal advice. But then it soon turned into more of guiding and mentoring. And I hope on your part, but I can tell you in mine, Norwood, I don't think that I have ever respected anyone as much as I respect you and love you for all that you've done. You're talking about fond memories here today, and this is something he's always telling me, oh, Mary, you're too kind. Oh, Mary, and see, that's not what I'm used to hearing. And he's, well, it's a truth. So, you know, he's, he always ends that with that positive note that everybody else is discussed. But I want to tell you something that many people won't know about Norwood and Norwood. Years ago, my husband, my husband was still alive, and I had him at home for five years during address conversion itself. We were in the middle of legal litigation because there was a group that said we didn't have the right to assign addresses in Berkeley County. I would be in up at five o'clock in the morning, back to bed at midnight. And one evening, I'll never forget, I looked up and here coming across my front yard was Norwood carrying a box, a flat box, and in it was a complete dinner for me and my husband, along with individual cherry pies. Now, we all know how Norwood is. Tim talked about the department head meeting, so we all know how Norwood is with faith goods. So just to make you feel just a little bit embarrassed for calling me out for being late. There are two cakes in my car that just came out of the oven and got done, and I, right before I came here.
You may excuse her for being here a little bit late, right?
But I think along with everybody else, Norwood, Norwood, I miss you greatly. You've been, like I said, a mentor, but most of all, you and all the others are great friends and beloved throughout. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And COVID nineteen or not.
I'm going to make this brief, because I'm not real good at this, but over the course of the time that I've known Norwood, and I've only been with the county for a short period of time, it is not easy to practice law in this environment, doing anything. The stress can be insurmountable at times, and you would never know if you ever sent a complaint. If there is an attorney out there who always has a smile, I've never heard his voice raised. I've never heard him even get
You've missed a lot of hits.
There is always
You need to start coming, you should have came to Thursday morning meetings.
Well, let me put it this way, the public pride is very much there for that. Because even in conversations, and I have to echo everyone else's sentiment, I haven't ever asked to talk to Norwood that I've been turned down. The door's always been open. There's always been a true positive response, and the most thoughtful, deliberate replies and answers that I've ever seen anyone. I don't know how anyone would step into those shoes, Norwood, but I hope that you enjoy your retirement. We will definitely.
I was going to say, this is really a moment here.
Yeah, we can't get in front of Mike at all.
I know. I just want to say how blessed I am.
Ask her something about the purchase order.
You have just made my job so much easier. You're always in there, you're urging me. I would never fold an envelope, a letter, the same way again, ever. I folded a letter one day while he was studying at my desk, and was putting it in the envelope, and he looked at me and said, what are you doing? And I said, what? He said, you've never folded a letter like that ever.
It's hard if you, if you want to say exactly what he said.
I can't hear that. There you go. But he, every single time I stick a letter in an envelope now, I think of you, because I cannot fit it any other way, but the right way, Norwood's way, and that's the way I'll do it. So I'm blessed, and I thank you for everything. I'm going to miss you like crazy.
It's like having a light switch.
Oh, yeah.
No, and just one more little thing. I will not miss that beep in that microwave. This guy will fix a cup of tea and leave it in the microwave for three hours, and that thing constantly goes beep, beep. And I'm like, oh. So I go and I take it out, and I say, Norwood, would you like your tea? He says, yes, I forgot it like three hours ago.
Probably had to reheat it, didn't you?
No, I took it to his desk, and he went back and reheated it, and it still beeped, so. I don't know if they ever get the truth to you. It's still there, Norwood. But thank you.
Pour yourself fucking in the bed.
Yes.
Always working.
Anyone else? One of the things I'll, I'll bring to your attention, we briefly talked about it, I think it was last week in the council chambers about, you know, our job is to be the boss, and that's our number one priority. But, and Dan said after we got done, he says it's very lonesome to be at the top. Right? Because ninety percent of the time, you can't be the boss and a friend. You're the exception, Norwood, and there's many exceptions out there. I always say, when you're at the top, your number one job is to be the boss first. But the ultimate goal is to be the boss and a friend at the same time. I thank you for leading by example. You're one of those ones, when friendship got close, you didn't take it for granted, and you didn't take advantage of it. You knew there was still a job to be done, and that's the biggest thing of trying to, trying to do that, is to juggle that friendship and that employee, employer relationship. So I like to stress that you've done it very well and with honor. So, thank you. At this time, we have, we'll take a break and take some photos. And anybody who wants to jump in with Norwood and have a personal shot, or, or be a group picture, please feel free to do so. It's a, it's a day, today's a day of celebration for Norwood on his retirement, but tomorrow will be the start of a new venture. So, and the countdown is here.
It is?
So at this time, we'll take a break.
Actually, he's been counting down for a while.
Actually, he's been counting down for a while.
Yeah.[509.34]
Yes, sir. I have two separate compensation recommendations for the council's consideration today. As I mentioned last week, this council is to be implemented. I've said more than once and will continue to say that we are very, very fortunate that we have the right people in the right places at the right council. And we truly have superstar work throughout the department. And I think it's borne out by, you know, your department heads, your people in your professional positions. You know, Doug and I talked about how it was 15 years ago when I came here and how the caliber of employee has changed for the matter. If you'll recall, as of too many years ago, we couldn't find an engineer. Now we have two P E S and staff. We just, you know, and our goal has been and will always be to ensure that everyone else is prepared. And I think this council is very successful in providing the tools for our department heads to do that. We have made great strides in developing what I call compensation career ladders for the sheriff's department, for central dispatch, for court security, for our fire firefighters. We've also made changes to the, just in the past three and a half years, to our work week and to our pay scales for non-public service safety employees so that we do attract good quality applicants, which I need to bear itself out when you see the four candidates that we bring in for 911. Right there next, next two weeks. So having said that, I have two separate matters I'd like to discuss with these council. The first has to do with some corrections for individual employees that I'm making today due to previous commitments, substantially increasing responsibilities and or internal extra efficiencies. You'll see in your packet there are five employees that I feel whose compensation I feel need attention. And I'd like to give you a little bit of background on the reason for the recommendation. The first is Melanie Fleese. Melanie was hired by the county on February 1st of 2000. For years, I tried to recruit Melanie for the county council qualities. But she was dedicated to engineering. Several years ago, we offered her the reclassification, actually built it into the budget for office administrator, but she declined. She didn't think that she was ready for the additional classification. Since that time, she has been one of the key people in addition to Brian Ross in the implementation of Lama software. As council president, Hope Haver knows, this past Tuesday evening, we had a late night meeting here. And when I left at eight o'clock, Melanie and some of the front staff were still working, trying to get a Lama fully implemented. We've since had discussions with Melanie. And she is prepared to be recognized for the role that she plays in the engineering and planning departments. When we built the classification in several years ago, we put the money in. But then over the course of subsequent budget years, we took the money out. So I'm requesting that Melanie Fleese be reclassified from administrative assistant 344-796 to office administrator for $49,000. The next employee is Canette Petry. As you know, Canette was hired April 1st of 2019 to train under Maria Childers as fiduciary supervisor. Maria had been here 40-plus years, so we knew that there's a lot of institutional knowledge to be gained from working side by side with her. If you'll recall, at the time of her interview, Canette was told that her compensation would be adjusted accordingly upon Maria's retirement on December 31st, 2020. That has not been done, and that's only not because I haven't thought about it, just that when I think about it, I forget to put it on the agenda. So I'm recommending that, due to her law degree and the fact that she does not have to go through the formal training and the certification required by the state, that Canette's salary as fiduciary supervisor be adjusted from $63,665 to $70,000. There's actually five separate recommendations that I'm making. If approved, Canette, I'm requesting that Canette's reclassification be done retroactive back to January 1st of 2020. And the money is in the budget.
And that's basically when her reevaluation was due anyway.
Correct. And that would have been more than six months. The next employee is Chad Schifflit. As you know, Chad is our very first public information coordinator and was hired effective 7/15/2019. We weren't sure at the time that we, and this is a position that we've talked about for a lot, a lot of years. We weren't sure at the time how extensive the work would be. But I will tell you with what's being done with our social media platforms. He has done an outstanding job, but he's prepared the packets for COVID-19, the public information packets. As you know, is that he just copied throughout the state. He prepared the nomination for the NACO achievement award. You know, his ability to do graphics and things like that are excellent. So at the time that I interviewed Chad, I explained that we would reevaluate his compensation after a full year of service. And as I mentioned, he sent me a simpler job. And I'm recommending that his compensation be adjusted from $45,000 to $50,000 effective July 1st. The next is Mike Lang. This is an internal equity adjustment, and I did provide you with your department heads' heritage compensation levels. Mr. Lang was hired January 12th of 2012 as deputy court marshal and was promoted to chief court marshal on March 27th, 2017. As you know, in three short years, he's built our civilian court security forces into a model followed by federal state agencies. He currently supervises 26 full-time and two part-time deputy court marshals and has a budget of about 1.3 million, slightly more than 1.3 million. He also manages the roadside liquor control program. Internal equity adjustments that I'm recommending is comparable to the director of homeland security, who has a similar workforce and a budget of 1.4 million dollars. Requesting that Mr. Lang's compensation be adjusted to $59,991 to $69,000. The final employee that I asked if you consider compensation adjustment would be Jack Lang. Jack Lang was hired April 1st, 2016 and promoted to facility director of 121, 2019. At the time of his retirement, Upton Burger was earning about 60, almost 65,000. And we agreed that we would revisit Mr. Lang's compensation after a year or so on the job. So again, it's on me. I've let the years slip by. So now I'm coming in to recommend that Mr. Lang's compensation be adjusted from $59,920 to $65,000. So if approved, again, I'm asking that Canette Petry's compensation adjustment be retroactive back to January 1st of 2020 and that the other four employees be made retroactive back to July 1st of 2020.
Okay. All right.
And I assume Jack Lang's name is spelled correctly?
No, it's just last name first is Lang.
Lang is spelled correctly there.
Oh. And then that's Mike's brother.
Yeah.
Yes. No, it's Lang. L-A-I-N-G. It's just his.
No, it's not spelled L-A-N-G-E.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's a typo, Mark. Or it's L-A-I.
All right. So entertain a motion on the recommendation for compensation adjustment for five employees.
Mr. President, I believe that the compensation adjustments outlined by county administrator.
In the same time, in the timeframe that he discussed. All right. Have a motion on the floor and have a second any further discussion.
I'd just like to say thank you for looking back and, you know, correcting an oversight. And I, and I say that because it, you know, with everything on your plate and everything that we look at all the time, it's easy, especially with as many people as you have to deal with, to, to have an oversight where you, you know, lose track of time. Time goes so fast when you're busy. And it happens in my business where you, where you lose track of time and, and you say you're going to do something and then that time comes and goes without even thinking about it. So I think it's very important to look back at that and make that correction, so.
And I'm finding that the older I get, the faster time.
And Mr. Davis regarding Melanie, back several years ago, prior to Brian Ross, I would go in and I'd say, okay, how many, how many chairs do you have and how many stacks of folders are you trying to complete? She'd have like three chairs. And so since we've got things with the new system, we're working on a timely manner, I'll see her, Melanie says, no chairs, no stacks.
I can remember when she worked down King Street and with Sonny down there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, I can remember when she worked on King Street down there.
Well, you all know how.
Yeah.
We were just talking about Sunday this morning, actually.
Yeah.
You know how highly I think of Brian and what he's done since he's been here, but. I will tell you that Melanie, Melanie keeps that all smooth. And I'm not sure he could do half the things in the field that he's done as if Melanie wasn't in the office doing.
Absolutely correct. It doesn't matter what it is, time it is, Melanie, she, there's never any negativity come out of her mouth. It's all positive. I mean, she's made, she's made a good team.
Yeah, I didn't realize she'd been there 20 years. But I, I remember, I remember dealing with her way back when, way back when they were on, they had right there.
Time's going really fast for you, isn't it?
I've tried to recruit her for the council several times and she's very, very well.
But you know, she was very, and she's always been pleasant to deal with, always. Even back then, it was, it was always a good experience dealing with her back then.
Just kind of amazes us that somebody'd be happy all the time. All right. All of us say aye. If you want to oppose, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Don't look so startled.
The next is an issue that I've discussed briefly with county council president, Hope Haver, and I asked if I could at least approach the council on this. And it's not something that we discussed as part of last year's, or part of budget preparation in the first quarter of this calendar year. But because we did end the year so strong and because of some of the, my revenue forecast for this year including the coronavirus relief funding, I'm here asking for, for consideration of employee compensation increases for all employees, public and non-public safety employees. As I mentioned.
Public safety and.
Public safety and non-public safety. As I mentioned, over the past three and a half years, this council has made a conscious effort to improve compensation through changes in pay scales as well as the work we get. And I've given you a table that lists the changes that, that you have approved since January 1st, 2017. And I will tell you that although you don't hear from many of our employees or most of our employees, I will tell you that our employees are very appreciative of the efforts that this council has made. As I, as I mentioned, you have over the past three fiscal years adopted what I call compensation career ladders for the sheriff's department, for our career firefighters, for court security, and for 911 employees, which I think has been very, very effective. You know, we, years ago, we were the training ground, including the area of emergency dispatch. And then we would lose employees to surrounding jurisdictions, and we're not seeing that anymore. The fall of the, and the compounding of applicants that we're getting for almost all of our jobs is, you know, night and day, 183 different than what it was even 10 years ago. So having said all those things, I'm requesting that the council consider giving all employees a 5% across-the-board increase retroactive to July 1st, 2020. The annual cost of the compensation increase for the compensation alone would be, and this does not include the special revenue funds, it does not include Fund 19A, which is the 911B. And it does not include, the figures that I give you also, does not include account 707 or 407, which is the assessor evaluation fund. I could tell you that both funds have adequate money that if, that of course we would give married employees, married employees those same increase and then that would be up to the elected, the electeds. It's allowed to be increased.
Right, right. But, but married people would be included.
Yes.
It's just not coming out of your own fund.
But this number I'm giving you does not include those.
Right, right. But the motion would include central dispatch. The ones that, the ones that's under the county government umbrella. Like you said, the revaluation fund, that's up to Mr. Hesse.
Correct. And what we would do, we would, if approved, we would tell the electives, this is how much you have compensation increases, that amount equal of 5%. Now that $690,966 is compensation input. But that also includes the effect that it have on overtime. Now that $690,966 is compensation input, but that also includes the effect that it would have on overtime. So I did calculate that in, in the total. Employer FICA would be $52,800 or $59,000. Hers would be $69,970 for a total of $812,922. And we can, the budget can sustain this.
Well, I think it's important for, one thing is, is we, we, as your compensation spreadsheet shows, that we've been pretty aggressive to try to catch up with people that was, the government wasn't able to do anything with for the longest time because of the recession. And I think we've done a good job catching up. Now we've got to keep up, right? And, and that's the thing. And, you know, some people may look at 5% of $5 per 100 of not being a whole lot of money, but it adds up to $812,000, almost $813,000. And the thing about this is, is as we always are very cautious, it's a, you know, it progresses and reoccurs every year. So I think for us to be able to do that, I hope that each and every employee understands that it is a significant amount of money. And we're trying our best to enhance and encourage people to come to workforce and to retain the ones we have.
Correct. And as part of the recommendation, we actually now have, we have a compensation and classification scale for non-public safety employees. We have a classification and compensation scale which is separate for sheriff's department.
Court martial.
Court martial's career firing 911. I'm requesting that you give the authorization to shift that whole scale up by 5%, which will increase our entry level of compensation by 5, which will again help us with.
All right. Entertained a motion to, for Mr. Davis's recommendation. Sorry, Noah, what I told you, if we can do something to try to keep you here another three years, you missed out.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Got a second? Sounds like somebody wants to get out of here. Any further discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone oppose? The motion carries. Thank you. One other thing I've got to do back on meeting reports, I don't think I told anybody, or I don't recall. Tuesday night at 6:30 was our first meeting, we felt of several, with the volunteer fire departments on a standardized MOU for all five fire departments. Except, we do have an addendum for Baker Heights, because I was in three, having the safer grant, we have an addendum to go on to back Creek Valley as well. It was, it was by far the best meeting I've ever had, to pull the volunteer chiefs and the board members, the presidents and us together. Everybody went in with a hoop in mind, very cooperative, understanding the need of the MOU and also talk briefly about the future of the, of the volunteer fire stations and moving forward. And, and actually, we were in and out of that meeting in an hour and 15 minutes. So very, very important meeting. I just want to make sure that the volunteers are, that I take time to recognize the people that put a lot of time in that, Dave Ryaning being the one that organized the fire association that put it together. It was a joint effort and event very, very well. So just to let you know that, that the MOU that we, we worked through currently has been touched up by Mr. Davis and Mr. Bentley, Mr. Wine and myself. And the draft is ready to go back to the volunteers to make sure that that's exactly what we talked about that night, which I'm 99.9% sure and naturally Chief Kopehaver. So as done, the fire commission has already been notified. Grant Canel has been told that we had a success, a very successful night, and I'll let you know that happened on Tuesday, so.
I'd like to point out that it's very important and, and thank Alan for keeping an eye on the wage scale and how that goes, because it's very important, especially at the rate that, that the wages are going up in our area here. They're, in our area, I think they're, they're raising faster than probably anywhere in the state. And in order to make sure that employees are compensated at an even scale as what happens in the community so that they're, it's not costing them money by staying and working for the county.
Absolutely. All right. Anything from the public? Mr. Barnhart, if you do the honor.
The friends of mine, I'm really reset.
We are reset.
Poems? I'd like to hear it.
Do you do poems there, Mr. Matt?
Yeah, I do. He's, he's my future.